Thank you all for joining us for the Buncombe County Commissioners Briefing Meeting. I think we're ready to get started. Commissioners, are there any questions about any items on our agenda for today? Or any other items other than those that are listed that Commissioners would like to discuss at the briefing meeting? Are there any questions about any items on the regular meeting agenda this evening? All right, then we will follow the agenda for the briefing meeting as it's been published. And the first item is a staff update on the Homeless Initiative Advisory Committee. Matt Cable's here to help us out with this item. Thanks, Matt.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update, as was requested, a quarterly update on the activities of the Hayek Homeless Initiative Advisory Committee. There we go. Thank you. So just as a reminder, particularly for the benefit of the public who is here and viewing, I know that there have been a lot of conversations recently around homelessness, including the meeting that was held in January. But just to explain the relationship between Hayek and the continuum of care, as well as to briefly explain what the Within Reach Plan is, so that as we reference those entities and that document throughout the rest of the presentation, there's some context. So the Asheville-Buncombe Homelessness Initiative Advisory Committee, also known as Hayek, is a joint committee of the Asheville City Council and Buncombe County Commission that serves as the governance board for the Asheville-Buncombe Continuum of Care. So the Hayek is an entity that serves as the capacity of the Asheville-Buncombe Continuum of Care. And a continuum of care is an entity that guides local communities in effectively responding to homelessness as a unified system. That entity creates, implements, and evaluates policies and strategies, as well as steers federal resources allocated to homelessness to most effectively address homelessness. So again, the Hayek is an entity serving in the capacity of the continuum of care at the current time. The Within Reach Study or Plan, again, which you received in January in a joint meeting between City Council and County Commission. This plan is intended to identify needs and develop recommendations to guide homelessness work within our community. It was authored by the National Alliance to End Homelessness, which is a nonprofit organization committed to preventing and ending homelessness. That plan and study was sponsored using funding from Dogwood Health and was jointly worked on through the city of Asheville and Buncombe County. There are Within Reach recommendations that the Hayek has already been working to implement as part of their work in the role as the continuum of care. The first was to adopt the Within Reach North Star Goal. So this was a very specific goal referenced in the study. And that goal is to reduce unsheltered homelessness by 50% within two years. And so the continuum of care and the city staff at the city of Asheville who serve as staff to the continuum of care and Hayek are required to do a point in time count annually. So the goal is to reduce that unsheltered population by January of 2025. So they've set both a goal and a benchmark timeframe. And that was adopted by Hayek at their meeting in February. Also at the meeting in February, they adopted the Within Reach Goals. So those are specifically listed here. I will note that the last goal wasn't specifically included within the Within Reach Study, but was added by Hayek, which is to promote equity to advance change. But the other goals: be bold, create accountable and transparent governance structures, build trust through unity, collaboration, and justice, focus on housing solutions, value the voice of people with lived experience, maintain fidelity to data and evidence, politics will not drive policies, and a focus on our future. So those were the goals, again, identified within the Within Reach Plan and adopted by Hayek at their February meeting, with some modifications at their meeting in March. The other major activity that Hayek has undertaken since that January meeting, when the Within Reach Plan was formally released, was the establishment of specific work groups focusing on specific tasks and areas of work. So the first of the four work groups is the Governance Work Group. And their job is to prepare a new continuum of care governing charter. And this is to transition from Hayek to an independent continuum of care. So the Within Reach Plan provides a lot of details about that potential transition. But the focus of the Governance Work Group is going to be to look at the model of a new charter and then how to actually execute that activity. So this work group, like the others that I'll reference, does include a Hayek member as a chair. So they are responsible for chairing the work group and then reporting back to the full Hayek. It includes, each include a person with lived experience, at least one. Also representatives from the Homeless Coalition, county representatives, both elected, and staff representatives, and then city representatives, again, both elected and staff, depending on which work group. And the Governance Work Group, Jen Teague, who serves as our Hayek member, is also chairing the Governance Work Group. The Shelter Work Group, this group is focused on leading efforts to plan for and implement newly funded shelter bed capacity by 30%, so that's its targeted work. Commissioner Beach Farrar is serving on that work group, as well as Rachel Nygaard with Strategic Partnerships. So they're serving in that capacity. The Coordinated Entry Work Group is working to update and revise standards, policies, and procedures for a new coordinated entry system. Jonathan Jones, within the Community Development Division, has been attending and participating in those meetings as a representative from the county. And then the Outreach and Encampments Work Group, which is leading efforts to create a comprehensive encampment resolution policy and developing a plan for collaboration of multiple current agencies involved in street outreach. The current county representative to that work group and member of Hayek who is attending is Claire Hubbard, the Community Paramedics Program Manager. In addition to all those that I've referenced, other CD staff are following the activities and providing both information and support as needed to each of these work groups. And in terms of next step...
Matt, I have a question. In terms of this bullet point on creating a comprehensive encampment resolution policy, could you just say a little bit more about that? I'm not totally clear on what that means, or I think it could be interpreted in different ways. Could you just kind of flesh that out a little bit?
Sure. There are a lot of very specific details within the Within Reach Study. It's embedded in there, specifically related to development of an encampment policy. And so encampments have presented issues within the community. And seeking to identify a way to resolve those issues with encampment structures, you know, individuals on property that's owned by someone else, some of the things that they're trying to address. It's really about developing a policy at the corporate COC level that then will be reviewed and actually developed in partnership with the county and city in terms of how the governments would respond to an encampment situation and resolve that issue. So it's really the development of how you respond to the encampment.
Thank you.
All right, in terms of next steps. So just again, for the benefit of everyone seeing this information, Hayek is meeting in person. They meet in City Hall First Floor Conference Room. Those meetings are the second Thursday of each month from 9:00 a.m. until 10:30. Those meetings can, you can attend in person, or you can view via live stream on the city's YouTube channel. Again, the city publishes that information because they are the staff entity of Hayek. The recordings are posted below, so if you can't attend the meeting live, you can view those recordings. And they meet in the second quarter, in the second quarter, they'll meet April 13th, May 11th, and June 8th. So they'll have three additional meetings before we're back to provide another update as to the activities of Hayek. We are anticipating providing another quarterly report at the second meeting in June of the Board, and then again at the first meetings of September and December. I am happy to answer any other questions that I might.
I have a question, Matt. Do we, and thank you for this update, first of all. I appreciate it. It's helpful. Do we have a time on the shelter bed capacity and the coordinated entry system?
And Commissioner Beach Farrar may be able to better speak on shelter, but I can speak a little bit generally to the timelines, if you want.
Why don't you go first?
Yeah. So each work group has been assigned a task. And so kind of their first job is to identify how long they think it's going to take them to complete what they've been asked to do. So different work groups have been undertaking different activities. The governance structure has probably the most established timeframe. There's really a goal to get a charter developed by June so that they can take some action potentially as early as July. The Shelter Work Group has been doing tours of shelters within the community as kind of a first step in their process. So each work group will kind of identify, they have their marching orders, their tasks that they are to complete. And the chair will be reporting back likely at the very next meeting kind of what the timeframe is on their deliverables, is my understanding.
Thank you so much for all this. And I can just share a bit more context from this working group. Again, Rachel Nygaard and myself from the county, Mayor Manheimer from the city with Emily Ball, and then various Hayek and community members. We began by basically reviewing the recommendations that came in the NIEH report and have for the last several weeks been doing in-person tours of different programs, ABBCCM, the Winter Shaf Shelter, the Jubilee Shelter, WNC Rescue Mission, and Haywood Street so far, some more tours to come. And that's really providing some really important dialogue opportunities with folks doing really critical frontline work and also just helping us continue to sort of really tease out that there are very strong program options within Buncombe County. For instance, folks who are entering into recovery programs and living at Transition House at ABBCCM, or Transition Village at ABBCCM, for instance. But that this gap around high-access shelter is really where this most pronounced need is. And so, you know, the recommendations included fairly specific breakdowns on the types of beds that would be created and really delineating between shelter beds versus beds that really are part of a program. We have as a working timeline within that group been talking about sort of a three-month timeline for being able to bring forward, I think maybe some of the first ideas around recommendations or such. So that's kind of what we've been using within the working group for a timeline conversation.
In terms of some initial ideas around how to increase the shelter bed capacity?
That is my understanding as a member of the group. Yeah. And yeah, I think we'll figure out sort of the more specific timeline for when formal recommendations will be ready to come forward. But it's my understanding that that's at least a starting point in the timeline that we're working around.
And I will just mention, so each of the work groups has met at least once. Not all of them have established their meeting schedule yet. And they are meeting in a virtual capacity outside of the Shelter Work Group, which has been doing some touring of shelter and program bed facilities. So in terms of having a definite timeframe for a deliverable, they're still establishing their meeting schedules. But all have met at least one time to begin their work.
So it's, obviously, there's not a recommendation yet. And like, okay, here's where the additional shelter space will be physically located and operated. So I know this is kind of an abstract question at this point, but that is a pretty big additional increase, right? So wherever that ends up being recommended for, is it anticipated that whatever funding's needed for capital or operational costs for that 30% increase is going to, there'll be a request to the city and the county? Are there other resource options for how to grow that? Just, again, I know we don't have a plan yet, but just thinking about something's going to come forward. What are the different investment options in terms of how to bring one or more facilities online to meet that goal?
Again, I don't want to kind of get ahead of my or anyone else's skis in this, but I can share that the kind of conversation has certainly been a joint funding model where the city and the county would be at the table. And I think we'd hope to approach philanthropic partners about their interest in being at the table as well. And, you know, I think at the, one of the ways I have heard this described in this working group is that really what we are looking to create is sort of something that functions as sort of an emergency department around shelter and is fully connected into the services and programs that already exist in the county. But that addresses this, you know, this need that we have and is not currently being met for this sort of 24/7, 365 days a year. No matter who you are or kind of what shape you're in, you can show up and get shelter and start that process of accessing services and ideally accessing a path into housing options. So that's kind of at the conceptual level. Now, the particulars of whether that's all housed at one site, whether that's housed across different sites, the particulars of who beyond the city and county will be approached for funding, I think, remain to be developed and worked out. But I welcome if staff has any additional perspectives on that.
Martin, do you have a question? Okay. Great. All right. Anything else, Matt, in the presentation? All right, thank you very much. Appreciate the updates. And Jasmine, thanks for serving on the Shelter Work Group piece of this. And we look forward to hearing more. All right. Next up is Resident Wellbeing Follow-Up.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
So today, what you're going to hear now is Tiffany's going to give you an update on some follow-up responses to questions related to the jail reduction part of the Resident Wellbeing Group. And then later, there'll be a conversation around kind of overdose deaths and opioids. That will speak to the substance abuse of part of it. But before Tiffany gets started, I just want to let you know that kind of what's coming down the pipeline. So in April, at your second meeting, we'll give you an update on the foundational and equity goals of the strategic plan. And then at some point in the spring, we'll be coming back with follow-up to your questions related to the educating and capable discussion you had about a month or two ago. So I'll hand it over to Tiffany.
Okay. I presented in January regarding the jail population reduction, enhanced public safety. And there was a question, question particular to the data that was asked about the failure to appear. So for people returning to custody due to failure to appear, what types of charges are involved? Lee Creighton, what strategy innovation, and myself looked at the data and the strategies that we're employing as it relates to it. So over half the people that are returning to custody due to only failure to appear having a misdemeanor as a top charge. And when we broke that down, looking at the misdemeanors particularly, one-third of those returning were the lowest-level misdemeanors. So that's the Class II and Class III misdemeanors. And basically, these order of arrests originate out of district court, where many of or most, if not all, the misdemeanors are heard in the kind of lowest-level court. Appeared to be about 70% coming into the detention facility for just a failure to appear regardless of the charge. So this would include felonies as well. Considerations regarding failure to appear. So in February, we looked at the average daily population for those in custody only for the reason of an order for arrest for not showing up for court. That was about 12.8% of the pretrial population. And 41% of those in custody, out of that 12%, excuse me, originated from court dates or order for arrests from 2021 or earlier. And these bonds are set as an order for arrest at the discretion of the judicial official issuing the order for arrest. If there is no bond set for an order for arrest, the magistrates are required to double the initial bond. And so research does suggest that bail amounts is not significantly associated with failure to appears. Many reasons that people fail to appear, and research has shown, is related to finances. People cannot miss work, transportation barriers, people have stayed at family and childcare. No amount of assigned bail will incentivize people out of the barriers of transportation and work conflicts. And we have studied and worked on this order for arrest and failure to appears to try to increase court appearance. And some of the things that we've done with the funding of the Safety and Justice Challenge is to work collectively, to create court reminder cards. We have big signage in the courthouse. We have pocket cards. So every person has access to a reminder. We've partnered with the ID Bureau and Justice Service Staff to enroll people that are being released. So we'll do it for them. We get their permission. And we get their phone numbers, and we'll enroll them manually into the court reminder system. Through the use of the Safety and Justice Challenge funds, we were able to add one additional attorney to the District Attorney's Office and the Public Defender's Office. They meet weekly to look at those in custody with an aim of either expediting the release or disposing of the case. We've been partnering with Episcopal Legal to restore a driver's license. One consequence for failure to appear or not paying fines is the revocation of a driver's license. So trying to reduce barriers. And then really addressing and working towards root causes, understanding why people aren't showing up for court. Not only the research that we found, but also in our community, understanding substance use and those that are coming into the court charged with substance use-related charges and ensuring that we can get people access to treatment in a timely manner. And we also implemented, most recently, a Court Navigator. We partnered with Goodwill, and we have a kiosk or a kind of front desk person. So when people are coming into the courtroom, or, excuse me, the courthouse, they can engage with somebody, a friendly face, to help wayfind, navigate, help enroll them in the court reminder text. If you see the signage to the right of her, or her left, probably, helping people enroll in the court reminder system. And she's also able to connect them with the programs and services that we offer in the courthouse. So I believe that concludes the information we have on failure to appears. Questions?
So I wasn't going to offer a question as much as just make sure I'm interpreting what you're saying correctly, because a lot of this is positive news, just kind of tied up in some stats here that I think would be helpful context. So most of the Class II and III charges, in my experience, have been really low-level, nonviolent misdemeanors, right? Like, these are, we're not talking the serious things. These are just low-level, largely driving charges, maybe an occasional resist, but largely things that would not land you in any significant period of custody anyway. So we're dealing with people who are nonviolent offenders, who are missing court. Some of them, almost half of them, from charges that are old charges, 2021, two years ago. And that's about 48 people? Am I understanding that right?
No, I think that's a percentage. Percentage of the 12%.
12.8% of the pretrial population, which is the only people we're really focused on, pre-adjudication or pre-sentencing. So we're dealing with a healthy number of nonviolent folks who are just missing court because of life circumstances. Is that the 5,000 short version? Okay.
Well, and that's the, it could be, and this is the complexities in the criminal justice system. There are other charges out there that they might be showing up for, like, in superior court. They might have a felony case. But they are being booked on the order for arrest for the top charge as a misdemeanor.
So the Superior Court's making a determination that they're not dangerous enough to merit custody for what they're facing there, but they're ending up back in court because of a low-level...
Could be.
I'm not going to hold you to that. In general, that's the story of some of the people that we're dealing with at this point.
And most people with the serious charges show up to court. They have an attorney. They have the court dates. And what we didn't mention and we're working on, and our district court judges have been working to do, is reduce the number of continuances. Sometimes people are asked to come to court 12 times in one year. And so that's repeated, so you may miss, you may be present for 11 of those court dates and then miss that one, then your order for arrest may be issued.
And that's where we're triggering this idea that you, either the magistrate or the judge may end up doubling your bond when you miss that one court date. So you went from a potential $2,000 released on your own to 4,000 or whatever double your present bond is.
Statutory, that's what they're obligated to do if a bond is not set. So if it's left blank, statutory, they're required to double the bond.
Okay. Thank you.
So first of all, I'm really excited that you're looking at the root causes. And also, the Court Navigator seems like a wonderful addition that would be very helpful to people. So I'm excited to see how that plays out and is helpful. And actually, my specific question kind of is what Martin was getting to. I was wondering, could you give us examples of Class II and III charges? Just so we have a better understanding.
Sure. Disorderly conduct, possession of marijuana. The one thing that don't have a lot of rigor is DWIs, but they are technically misdemeanor-level offenses. But there's a lot of statutory restrictions to be flexible with DWIs. And usually, if you are your first-time offender, you would not get an active sentence on the charges if you were convicted. If you were, let's say, you have repeat charges, maximum time for a Class III would be about 20 days with $200 as a fine. For a Class II, it's a $1,000 maximum fine with about 60 days of jail time.
Tiffany, what was the first item you mentioned on that list?
The Class IIIs.
Before the marijuana, what was the one before that?
Disorderly conduct. We can give a class list. I don't want to rattle Martin. He might be more familiar in criminal court than I am. But usually, those are real lower-level. Misdemeanor larceny is a good one. So someone shoplifting and getting maybe, there was one actual charge of like in the grocery store or at a shopping mall, and you're picking up something under $1,000 value.
Shoplifting by concealment of goods is that one. Larceny would be a one, but they're indistinguishable in that sense. And one of the big ones that we have is driving without a license, which virtually no one ends up in custody for if they're sentenced. It's just a mechanism that unfortunately brings folks back to our system.
And one thing we didn't mention, we have diversion programs for these type of misdemeanor-level charges. So if people do enroll in the diversion program, they can get their case dismissed by the District Attorney's Office. And that might be just a different population of those who are actually enrolling in our programs versus those who are not enrolling and then also not showing up for court. And we can probably look at that data as a layover who's, who are missing in our diversion programs.
I think you hit on something really interesting in highlighting the charges, a lot of the charges being from 2021, because at that point, many folks are believing that their matter's been resolved or dismissed. And when they're getting pulled over for a traffic ticket, they're finding themselves arrested for something they generally did not know they had an order for arrest for. And we certainly have great mechanisms with diversion, if it even gets that far. But I think the disruption in folks' lives when they thought they'd moved on is probably the single biggest impact point for us with these strategies that Tiffany put forward.
Thanks for this update. Can you walk us through what tends to happen once someone is in custody because of the failure to appear? How long are they staying? How do they get out? Like, or get sentenced, or like, what tends to happen next?
We can look at the length of stay. So folks are expected to have a first appearance the next day. I have seen just sitting in court, that population might get missed because they're an attorney, so they might not necessarily get a first appearance court date because they've already been advised by the judge. So if we're not actively looking at who's custody, somebody might sit there longer than they actually would need to. Usually, pretrial does a good job of coordinating, and that's only if they're assigned to pretrial. And so that's why the jail review team is like integral in reviewing cases that come before them. So folks don't just sit in custody off of a failure to appear, because sometimes they might not even know why they're in custody or what their bond is. And I think we can give dates of length of stay and try to proactively look at mitigating people staying in custody. It also depends on the bond amount, if they're able to post bond. And if they've missed several court dates, it might be that the, and I'm speculating, but these are like common themes that we see. So anecdotally speaking, they... uh, they might sit there until their case is actually resolved because it's the fear of if I let them out, they're not going to show back up to this neck, next court date.
I guess to piggyback off of that, you mentioned length, length of stay. I mean, there's a, there's a range, right? Because it's kind of almost random or by chance or accident. Can you give us kind of a sense of what the, the range of length of stay is? And it's something I'd love to see more data on, I guess, at a later time.
I think we can provide that. I don't know if we have it readily available or if Lee has it already pulled. But it can be the next day they get out and it can sit until their case is resolved, which may take weeks to a few months.
And I'll say, even, even when we, if we did come back with that data, some of the, the story that's not told just from the paperwork itself is what date your court, your next court date set on by the ADA. So if they pick the officer's date who arrested you, that could be 19 days out. That could be later that week. Uh, but that's not something that the county or anyone else on our side would have control over. And also to mention, I neglected to mention that one of the more important on second degree trespasses. Very common class C misdemeanor that is incarcerating people.
It's the same kind of, we're talking about like homelessness and who's getting picked up and who's sitting in jail for being homeless or trespassing in communities. And I, some people have no court date that are in our jail, that a court date hasn't been assigned yet for, and I think Martin being criminal court could speak more to it than I can, but the defense and the ADA maybe not being ready to proceed. So they might sit in jail and not have any court data signed. So if you're not carefully looking at who's in custody, those people might sit there a lot longer without having their case resolved.
All right. Any other questions on this item? All right. Thanks Tiffany. Appreciate the updates. All right. The next item, uh, on the agenda is, um, discussion on overdose deaths. And Commissioner Beach Farrar is going to get us started on this item.
Thank you. I want to recognize that, um, Commissioner Sloan and Commissioner Moore and I will be jointly making this presentation. And, and before beginning, wanted to just take a moment to, um, recognize the many people in the room who show up every single day and often work through the night, um, working on these issues. And, um, across, uh, multiple departments, um, within Buncombe County Government and the Sheriff's Office have stood up some of the most life-saving, impactful and innovative programs that, um, that we see in, um, in the state and in some cases in the country. And also that many, many people in the room, um, uh, have very personal stories that bring them to this as well. So before beginning any conversation, um, just always want to take a moment to recognize folks who are on the front lines of this work with a lot of gratitude and folks, um, myself included, who have lost people to addiction, um, and, and, um, Carrie, this is part of our stories. So with that, I'll just very briefly kind of tee this up and then turn things over to Parker. Um, and then he, he, Martin and I will sort of tag team and then open it up to a discussion we very much look forward to at the commission and staff level. Um, just that the, um, impetus for this conversation today is, um, the recent trends that we are seeing in Buncombe County related to rising overdose deaths. And, uh, the, those, um, numbers having reached, uh, an all-time high in our community and feeling like it was really important for us to have some dedicated, very focused time for discussion about, um, how we respond to that reality and how we can build on, um, everything we're learning about programming and services that are saving lives to reach more people, including those at highest risk. All of this, of course, falls under the very big umbrella of the total portfolio of, of work that's happening through Buncombe County Government, through the Sheriff's Office, um, and many, many community partnerships responding to the very acute need to save lives and reduce overdose and overdose deaths. Uh, and the ongoing work of supporting people as they move through the treatment and recovery process and rebuild their lives. So just wanted to take a moment to sort of situate today's conversation and, and lift up that because the issues of addiction are so multifaceted, uh, oftentimes when an, when a presentation comes to us, we hear about many, many, many things at once. And our hope today is really to have a laser-focused conversation about one thing, uh, which is how as a community we can, first of all, name what's happening and name it as a crisis. And then how we can respond so that we can reduce, uh, the number of deaths happening as a result of overdoses, all of which is to say really how we respond to a crisis to save more lives. And today's conversation, rather than being another sort of big picture briefing, is really a very laser-focused, uh, discussion about what's happening and, uh, how we can move forward as a community in responding to that. And with that, I'll turn things over to Parker.
Thanks Jasmine. Do we have the, the PowerPoint available or are we going to run off paper? There we go. Thank you.
Good luck.
Title slides, okay. Moving to the first slide. I don't know where I'm pointing. Okay. So to get us started off, I'll give you a understanding of where we've been. Starting with, going back to September of last year, we had a briefing, um, on kind of the first wave. We're talking at, talking the first wave of opioid settlement funds. Um, so we got an education on that. Moving on to October, um, we received a briefing, um, on overdoses and overdose death, um, data and programs, uh, from, related programs from Buncombe County EMS and the Sheriff's Office. Uh, some of that data you'll see later in this presentation. Moving to December, uh, we got a similar briefing on resident well-being, um, and that dashboard. And then, you know, from there, we moved into a new phase of this, this endeavor, um, between January and March. Um, you know, if you're, if you're like me, you don't look at public health-related or, uh, drug use-related line graphs a whole lot. So we needed a, a kind of behind the scenes education on the scale, uh, of the, of the crisis. And just what, what's, what's occurring behind the scenes to, to make it this bad. And that brings us to, you know, March 7th, um, and our resolution to participate in the second wave of opioid settlement funds, um, and today's presentation on what to do next. And so throughout this discussion, you know, we're going to talk about these three topics. There's a uniqueness, there's a lot of unique things about this, about this moment. Both, both good and, and very bad. Um, you know, the, the overdose death rate, uh, is, is very high. It's, it's, it's above the state average. Um, it's, we've lost 983 persons since 2015. So that's, you know, that's kind of a scale to me only reminiscent of, uh, of COVID-19. The other thing unique about this moment is, is, is there's, there's funding that's kind of coming to our, uh, to our doorstep for this very thing in different waves, in a sustained way, which is, which is unique. And the other thing unique about, about us is, um, Buncombe County has existing programs, uh, both in the Sheriff's Office and in, um, and in Buncombe County EMS, um, with fantastic staff that know what they're doing, that, that know, uh, understand the techniques that, that work, understand, understand the treatment programs that can help people and save more lives. Um, and that's, that's the goal and what we'll talk about at the end of this discussion, which is, uh, what tools we have to implement, uh, to save more lives. And I'll pass.
First part of this conversation is taking, um, a close look at the data and what it's telling us. And we'll start with looking at, oops, there we go. Give me a second to get my bearing with this. Where did you click it Parker? Where did you point it? There we go. Okay. We'll start with just, um, kind of looking at this at the area, uh, from an aerial view. And just reviewing that we know that overdose deaths are the leading cause of death for people under age 50 in our country. That overdose deaths are increasing and have reached an all-time high in Buncombe County in recent years. We know that without current local efforts, we would see even more people dying. And yet what we also know from those with lived immediate experience and those on the front lines of this issue is that we have entered a new phase of the overdose crisis. And that the demographics of those most impacted and most at risk have changed. Um, and therefore we need to do more to reach those most at risk of dying, um, with our current strategies. At the county level, we also know that eliminating deaths as a result of substance abuse is a goal under resident well-being of our strategic plan. So this is something we have set, um, uh, uh, goals and vision around in our ongoing work. I want to take a moment and talk about the data we'll be referencing today, which comes from two sources. State-level data is collected around overdose deaths and is a very important, uh, part of how we understand what's happening. At the state level, deaths are tracked by county of residents. Additionally, uh, for years, we've seen that the Buncombe County Sheriff's Office and the Register of Deeds Office have been collaborating to generate local data through the manual review of death certificates. And this data tracks the number of deaths that have actually occurred in Buncombe County. So whether someone has an official residence of Buncombe County or not, if they die in Buncombe County, that death shows up in this local data. It's really important to note that both data sets are critically important and we need both to understand fully what's happening. The state data is especially important for comparative purposes. The local data is especially important to understand what services, first of all, are being utilized and need to be built out. This next slide is pulled from state data and adds in some national data as well. The orange line at the top shows you Buncombe County. The blue line is the state and the gray line is the country. This shows overdose death rate by per 100,000 overall population. What you see here, uh, shows that Buncombe County's rate of overdose death is trending significantly above both state levels and national levels. The next slide show, is pulled from the local data source, our local data, and shows that that death rate is even higher at 60.4 per 100,000. The combination of that state and local do- data again tells a story that's obviously very, um, uh, human, but it also tells a story about the scale and scope of what's happening. As we look at this data from 2015 to present, what we see, uh, is that we're experiencing currently all-time highs of overdose deaths. Just to explain this data for a second, this is locally generated data. So this is people who died within Buncombe County. The final circle there is 2022 data. This slide was based on data that was pulled about three weeks ago. And the time since then, there's been additional review of 2022 data. And that number is actually up to 177 with more death certificates yet to be reviewed. So we do not yet have a total count for the number of people who died of overdoses within Buncombe County in 2022. We know that at 177, it is the highest number we've ever seen and that that count is not complete yet. Let's dig a little deeper into what's actually happening, uh, within these deaths. The first thing that we're seeing is that overdose deaths related to prescription drugs have decreased. I want to take a moment for that to sink in. For many years, when this issue would come in front of us, we knew that a major driver on, uh, what was leading to addiction and then what was leading to deaths was, uh, prescription drugs. And we have actually seen that number decrease for a lot of different reasons, but among them, the many strategies that have been deployed to push, to decrease that number.
Jasmine, do you want to probably interrupt and just ask?
Yeah, yeah, please.
So that's, that's obviously very encouraging. And, um, just any other, like to what extent is it decreasing? Is it marginal or, you know, quite significant? I mean?
Quite significant.
Yeah.
There are some slides to this. We also have many subject matter experts in the room. So I would, um, maybe once we open up the discussion, folks can jump in and correct anything that needs to be corrected or amend it. But I would, uh, say we've seen significant decreases there. However, the overall number of overdose deaths is increasing and reached an all-time high. Specifically what is driving that is overdose deaths from fentanyl. An illustrative data point is that in 2015, 33% of overdose deaths involved fentanyl. By 2021, 74% of overdoses did, an 823% increase. Um, just for a brief bit of context, uh, fentanyl was introduced into the local drug supply around 2015. It's a synthetic opiate that is being added to other drugs, including stimulants such as methamphetamine. This next slide, which is a little hard to see on the screen, but folks can see on the printed copy in front of them, show, shows you, um, from that 2015 to 2021 period, the number of overdose deaths, uh, related to fentanyl, related to heroin and related to prescription drugs. So Brownie, this provides some raw data answering your question about what we've seen with prescription deaths.
So the number, right, okay. So the number of, um, the number of fatalities from overdoses related to pers- prescription drugs has gone down, which is positive. And, and maybe you'll speak to this later. One of the other things I was curious about in the discussion is, as we started looking at this, giving more attention to this several years ago in the commission, one of the other, um, pieces of information that we, you know, were impressed upon was that a really high percentage of people who develop addictions, it originates with legally prescribed medications. Do we have data on whether that's still the case, that that's still, even if the actual overdose deaths is, uh, declining, if it's still this, a similar source of like origination of addiction problems?
That's exactly what we're about to pivot into. And part of how the story has changed is there are new origination problems, um, which we'll talk about in just a second. And the next slide addresses. One of the big things that has changed is driven by the fact that fentanyl has now been introduced into almost every drug that people are using. And, uh, the term for that in this field is called, uh, basically polysubstance use. Uh, polysubstance refers to someone taking more than one drug intentionally or accidentally. Fentanyl is usually the fatal additive to other drugs such as methamphetamine that causes death. So basically, if, to put it simply, five years ago, the story might have been someone has surgery. They're taking pain pills. They develop an addiction. They next go to heroin because that's what they can find and then they get fentanyl. The story now might be someone is taking meth and it's laced with fentanyl that they did or did not know about and they're dying as a result of that. So two very different kind of origin stories on how addiction or how drug use is happening and then how people are actually ingesting something that is killing them. Again, we have a lot of subject matter experts in the room who can do much deeper dives on this, but, but that's a big piece of what's changed. Another significant new trend is a disproportionate impact on BIPOC communities, an increase in overdose deaths, particularly among Black, Latino and indigenous, indigenous individuals. Um, a data point on this is that in 2015, 3% of all overdose deaths were BIPOC individuals. By 2021, 13% of all overdose deaths were BIPOC individuals. So that is another new trend that is showing up in real time and on the front lines of these issues that we need to be aware of and responding to. Some context on this, which is really important, is that to date, a lot of the opiate epidemic work has been framed around opiate use disorder, largely to the exclusion of those whose primary use is stimulants. And that gets to your question, Brownie. A lot of the strategies that have been developed and are saving lives are oriented around people whose, um, addiction and drug use originates in opiates. Now people whose drug use and addiction is with other substances are also at very high risk of overdose death. Across health, health issues, and this is something we've talked about across many, many different issues. We know that the BIPOC community in Buncombe County and, and across the state and country and country experience historical and current disparities in health outcomes and in access to culturally aligned and equitable services. And on both of these issues, polysubstance use and disproportionate impact among BIPOC communities, we see that these trends are happening in Buncombe County. They're also happening at the state level and the national level. In summary, before I turn things over to Commissioner Moore, just in summary, again, we know that overdose deaths are the leading cause of death for people under age 50 in our country. They're increasing and have reached an all time high in Buncombe County. Deaths are increasing at alarming levels among people who are polysubstance users and among BIPOC individuals. We know that without current local efforts, even more people would be dying. However, we've entered a new phase of the crisis where the demographics of those most impacted have changed. And as a result, our current strategies are not yet reaching those most at imminent risk of dying. And with that, I'll turn things over to Commissioner Moore to walk us through the next section.
Offer some good news in the midst of a lot of the shocking data that we've gotten thus far. So talking about our current high impact efforts, and I will echo Jasmine's appreciation and Parker's appreciation for the folks who are already doing this work, many of whom are sitting in the room and addressing the myriad of ways that we're approaching this. So just to give a very quick overview of where we're at right now and what we're doing to save lives, without the folks who are already in this field, we would be seeing even more deaths. So we have some high impact strategies, things that are working. The common theme that you're going to hear today is these things take time. Recovery is a process. It's something that's going to take a bit of time to work, but what we do have in the works right now that's actively changing lives, increased access to medication assisted treatment, MAT through the Buncombe County Sheriff's Office MAT program. Innovative, this is something that we're not seeing across the state or even across the country at high levels. Our community paramedic program, our community paramedic MAT program, which we got to see firsthand, most of us on commission, and really to see how this, we're reaching people in our community at different levels, wherever they're at, we're making those connections and we're finding how we go about serving folks. Buncombe County Bridges to Care Partnership with Mayhec, along with a few other initiatives that, that we don't have as much time to go into today. But these are some of the big things that are working right now, long term, addressing what we're, what we're dealing with here. Our community paramedic post overdose response team, our port teams and the port program and mobile outreach teams, and increased access to naloxone to reduce some overdoses. So we are making an impact. What we're doing has been effective. Again, the common theme being recovery takes time. I don't know if this stat is still right, so someone correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I think we're one of, only maybe 1% of jails in our country, or jails or prisons in our country offer MAT, so we're ahead of the curve on a lot of what we're doing right now. And it is yielding positive impact for our community. But again, to address Jasmine's point, the BIPOC population and along with the types of substances we're seeing, the polysubstance use, has left a lot of folks in a limbo status that we haven't seen before. So as far as collaborations go, through strong collaborations, we've been able to work with a lot of our partners, helping access continuum of services. And I do want to give a shout out to a lot of those agencies specifically, because we've been using our resources more effectively as we've seen the trends come up and addressing the various, myriad of forms and communities that we're impacting. But specifically, under Buncombe County government's purview, EMS, Health and Human Services, Behavioral Health, Justice Services, each of which has been involved in different ways, everything from case management services and connecting people to services to going out into the community with our community paramedic teams. And the Register of Deeds as well, in keeping track of a lot of this data so that we have the level of urgency that we're looking for now to address this really specific, again, as Jasmine said, laser focused kind of approach on how we stop deaths. The Buncombe County Sheriff's, Sheriff's Office and the innovation that they've been undertaking along with community medical providers, Mayhec being a really big partner, community organizations, and leaders throughout who are talking about this and keeping it at the front of our, our desks and our radar to make sure that people are not being left behind. Just because we're seeing a change in substance use doesn't mean that we don't have an imminent problem. We're still facing something that is destroying lives, taking lives from us. And all of these strategies are great and effective, but, and without them, we certainly would see more overdose deaths, more overdosing in general. But all of these strategies are built to address opioid use disorder. So I think the thinking here for us is that we need to do something that's specific and expanded to reach those who are polysubstance users and members of the BIPOC community. So as we're working on the, the five year, 20 year plan here, what's going to stop people from dying immediately? And that's kind of the impetus for where we're at today. So I will hand that back to Jasmine.
So the final section here is really launching us into a conversation about where we can go next. Just to take a moment for some level setting, part of our hope in having this conversation today is really about kind of creating a container for us at commission level to be focusing on this in a sustained way and working in partnership with staff, with the sheriff's office, with community partners, on how we move forward. Part of that is naming this as a crisis and saying we need to treat it like a crisis. We need to act quickly and in a coordinated way as we would in any crisis where people are dying at this rate. Thinking about how we responded to a pandemic, how we respond to natural disasters, something that is elevated to the level of knowing that, that folks are dying at alarming rates that deserve that level of response. Also recognizing that we've moved into a new phase of the overdose crisis and thus need new responses that build on what we know. Strategies that are proving to be high impact need to be expanded and made accessible to people who are at greatest risk for overdose and death, particularly folks who are polysubstance users and members of the BIPOC community. This means, we know, meeting people where they are and building trusted bridges to these high impact strategies. Increasing access to MAT, medication assisted treatment, is one of the most impactful steps we can take to reduce deaths. And we also know we need new approaches to ensure that these services are accessible to those most at risk of dying. And just to say it out loud, I think something we all carry with us in various ways, but just knowing this, this work needs to be informed by data, by equity, by the perspectives of those closest to the problem, those most impacted, and by collaboration. And that this process will need to stay nimble and adaptive. As with any crisis, there is not a turnkey response to it. There's not a single formula that we can implement tomorrow that will address this. And our responses to this specific laser focused challenge of how we reduce overdose deaths will need to be adaptive and resourced in a way that recognizes that those most impacted and those on the front lines of the issue are going to need to continually be assessing what's working and what's not, and making adaptations to ensure that these services, which we know can save lives, are actually accessible to the folks who need them today, tomorrow, and the day after that. In terms of proposed next steps, this is, you know, kind of where Parker, Martin, and my thinking has coalesced around how we move forward. First is with a request to county leadership and management and to staff from across departments to come back as quickly as possible to commission with action items and budget requests to expand high impact efforts to reduce overdose deaths. Specifically, ideas around how EMS's community paramedic program can expand and strengthen Thoughts and ideas from county management about how to best support data sharing and coordination across departments. And when the sheriff's office, at a timeline that works for the sheriff's office, hearing ideas about how to strengthen and expand the reach of the very impactful MAT program. Specifically, what we envision is that as these ideas are ready to come forward, they will come to us, and we will have the opportunity for discussion, but they will also come with requests for funding, which could be made through budget amendment. As you all will recall, we received the first year's allocation from the Wave One opiate settlement. That initial funding was front loaded. We dispersed $458,000, or approved dispersal of $458,000 this spring. There's an incredible community steering committee that has been doing a lot of heavy lifting and work on thinking about broad strategies around that. And as we think about allocation, I think, you know, we'd be looking at drawing from that first year's allocation from the settlement to immediately put some resources behind strategies that could be saving lives. Moving forward, what we would propose and look forward to hearing other people's feedback on is that in our fiscal year '24 budget discussions during budget workshops and other, other discussion points, we are looking at ways to ensure ongoing stable resources for overdose prevention, overdose death prevention, and for the county's overall portfolio of work combating the opiate and addiction crises, which we recognize includes death prevention strategies and also includes how you support people several years into their treatment and recovery process. We would also like to see commissioners and staff work together on a multi-year strategy and goals to reduce overdose deaths that include acute services, like we've been discussing, continuity of care and prevention efforts, getting to those root causes. And that this would include funding strategies, deploying a combination of general funds, opiate settlement funding from Wave One, and presuming it moves forward Wave Two, and then opportunities for grant funding, as well as creating systems for regular updates to commission on the impact of these strategies, what we're learning, overdose data and overdose death data, so that as close to possible in real time, we are tracking the impact of what's, of the work that's happening and understanding what's happening with this crisis. We know broadly, from decades and decades in our country of, of watching how one crisis after another has kind of crashed on the shores of, of various communities around drugs and addiction, that we are often playing catch up by the time we're in a position to build out programs and services. And one thing I think we hope to do as much as possible is collapse and, and shrink that period between when a new trend is happening in people's lives on the ground in Buncombe County, and people are living through that, and people on the front lines are seeing that, and how long it takes to bring online a response to it. And in saying all of this, recognizing that, you know, none of this is easy work. It's not easy to figure out how to solve problems that don't have easy solutions. It's not easy to figure out how to coordinate work across at least five departments and multiple agencies. And, and it's not easy to be in, in the front lines of this work day in and day out. So with all that said, what we're excited to do is, is really turn this to the full commission for discussion and invite in this questions and perspectives from staff. And again, there's many folks in the room working on this who might be able to take deeper dives on, on any of the questions that come up. So I think that concludes the sort of formal part of the presentation and just look forward to pivoting into that discussion at this point.
I'll start us off and just say thank you to the three of you for digging into this, and especially for staff to working with you and, and bringing this to our attention. And with that, can you, you are someone who's expert in this area, elaborate more on the fentanyl overdose, kind of building awareness at the community level with us having this conversation? Can you just provide more awareness around what's going on with that?
If, if there are staff who are comfortable addressing that, I, I would love to defer to folks who work in this field. What I can just start by saying is that, you know, I, I think a huge thing that people need to be aware of is that fentanyl is present in many of the drugs that people are purchasing or using. And that can be stimulants like methamphetamine, any number of different kinds of drugs. And sometimes people are aware of that, and sometimes they're not. When people take fentanyl, whether they meant to or not, if you take it over time, you can also develop a dependence, an addiction to fentanyl, which is an opiate. So even if you're, the primary drug that you use is methamphetamine, for instance, and you've used it for many years, if fentanyl is now in that supply, you can develop a secondary addiction to an opiate, fentanyl. And because we know the lethality of fentanyl, and we know, you know, that people are at a very, very high risk of overdose and overdose death anytime they ingest fentanyl. I think those are some important things for folks to be aware of. For many, many years, when we talked about fentanyl, we talked about opiates, we talked about the overdose crisis, it was all oriented around this one, this, this one story around opiate use addiction. And folks who might have been using other drugs or communities where other drugs were more commonly used might have felt like that had nothing to do with their experience. And that has all collapsed now into one crisis. It's still the opiate crisis. Fentanyl is an opiate. It's a very lethal opiate, and it's broadly in the drug supply. So that's how I would describe it. Again, there's a lot of voices in the room, so if there are other folks who'd like to join us in this conversation, from my perspective, we'd love to have you.
Sarah Gayton, who manages the MAT program at the sheriff's office, and Claire Hubbard, who manages the community paramedic program with EMS.
Commissioner Beach, Farah, and Sloan, and Moore, you did a fabulous job commanding that information and the data. It's quite impressive. Speaking to the fentanyl, specific question, when we, when I started looking at the data in 2015, 10% of our deaths in Buncombe County were stimulant related. So that would be, say, cocaine or methamphetamine. When we get to 2021, 50% of the deaths have stimulants in them, and that's because they also have fentanyl in them, which is very highly lethal, as, as was mentioned. Going into the specifics of fentanyl numbers, and again, this is just bringing some context with the absolute figures. In 2015, we had 13 deaths that had fentanyl in it with the, from the medical examiner's autopsy report. In 2017, in two years, it jumped from 13 up to 102 of the deaths had fentanyl in it. So we had a significant escalation within a two year mark. In 2021, I've got 120 deaths marked that had fentanyl in it. So again, that's what's driving the deaths and right on point with, you know, fentanyl is an opioid. So the good news is it can be reversed with Narcan, with naloxone, right? We can reverse it. We can also treat it, but when we've got stimulant users that don't realize there's fentanyl in their drug supply, it's creating overdoses.
Commissioners, I'll echo Sarah. Thanks so much. It's amazing to hear like how, what a comprehensive understanding you have of these processes, just even in the past couple of weeks. I can speak to the other side of it, which is the operational and medical. So it sounds like, again, everybody's got a really good understanding of why people are dying across the board from different demographics, but the treatment side of it is really difficult, right? As you stated, we've had some straightforward, I say straightforward very loosely because no addiction is straightforward, but the pathway to opioid recovery, what is and was much more straightforward. Polysubstance is a much more difficult beast to, to treat and to manage, and so it just requires a much broader and greater bandwidth of people and providers and resources to try to get ahead of it and to actually help people get through treatment, since it's much more difficult to keep them supported when they also have a methamphetamine or polysubstance
One other question I have about, kind of on the same topic, is, and kind of partly going back to an earlier question, you know, in terms of the trends we see in the community over the last six or seven years, and are we seeing that there are, there's a higher percentage of members of the community who are, you know, wrestling with some form of addiction, like, let's just say, not including alcohol, but like, you know, in this set of drugs? Are those numbers, is that percentage going up or down or fairly stable? And then the related question would be, because I mean, and part of what we're hearing is that with the introduction of fentanyl, what might have been, you know, a really difficult challenge for a lot of people who were struggling with addiction has become much, much more dangerous because of the introduction of fentanyl into, into the whole mix here. But, so this, I guess it's a two part question. Are we seeing overall levels of addiction rising, or is it, is it really fairly similar to where we were before, and it is really just that the introduction of fentanyl has made all of this so much more dangerous than what we saw prior to that?
I, I certainly don't have data around the first question. I would say we, we all, we've been seeing addiction and death via addiction for a long time. I'm sure with COVID and with, I'm sure there's a million factors that can contribute. I'm sure with COVID and with, I'm sure there's a million factors that contribute to, I would guess, an overall rise in substance use in the past few years. But even, even without that, we've seen a very significant increase in deaths from fentanyl in the past three or four years, just uncomplicated, straightforward fentanyl deaths. I think for a long time, we tried to figure out who was doing fentanyl by accident, or who was doing it on purpose, quote unquote. And I think at this point, like Commissioner Vichara said, it's just the drug supply is so saturated across the boards that I would actually include people with alcohol use disorder in that. I would include anybody who has social determinants of health, who's in poverty, who's addicted to anything, I would include them as in danger of consuming fentanyl on purpose or by accident at this point. Again, I don't have data around that, but we're just seeing such a wider demographic of people using drugs in general than we saw even two years ago, if that's helpful.
So one of the things, one of the things, Commissioners, I want to point out, is across the nation, we're seeing rise in toxicity. And that's certainly true here, when you look at the medical examiner's data, okay? As far as fentanyl is stronger, okay? So it's binding stronger with those receptor sites, and so it's requiring higher doses of Narcan. So when I started my career as a paramedic, the heroin patient, we're giving point four milligrams of Narcan and waking them up, resuscitating. Today, we're using four to eight milligrams. We hit at 10-milligram saturation where Narcan doesn't work as effective in waking people up. So the toxicity and things like Xylazine and things like that, that we're seeing, to give you a longer high, it's harder to wake those patients up and resuscitate. 541 times last year, we give Narcan, not our community paramedics, our EMS paramedics, and the firefighters in the field. That's 541 lives saved, okay? If we wasn't doing this type of response and working together. You know, there's also data where we know the public give a lot of Narcan prior to us arriving, but we weren't asking that question until recently. So one of the things that we're going to, and we will work very diligent on, is getting stronger data to answer these questions. And I think one of the things that y'all are asking for is, is we kind of get more tighter in our instant command system of how to handle this issue, is that we drill deeper on the data, you know, and have a dashboard that we can pivot and respond to in real time. The other thing I've got to say, be very remiss if I don't say it, y'all had an EMS study that y'all reviewed on Monday. A lot of ask, a lot of things to elevate EMS. These things go together, okay? And it's real important that they are elevated together, so that we can keep saving lives. Because EMS is not only getting taxed with increasing overdoses, but we're seeing more strokes, more heart attacks, we're seeing more chronic disease issues post-COVID world. And it's really important, we drive down our response times, because there may come a day in the near future, that Narcan administration's not even going to work, we're going to have to get there and ventilate and oxygenate people, and be there in that four-minute response time, or they're going to be clinically dead. And so as we're figuring out these strategies, we got to be mindful of all the competing interests and rising that tide together in a uniform passion, better serve the whole community. And that's what I really want to talk about, is the whole community response to not only what we're doing as a community and the Community Paramedic Program, but all the other agencies in the county that's working together to facilitate the best outcomes for our patients.
Taylor, you couldn't have teed up my question any better. Thank you for that. So based on the EMS study that we've now heard, you know, the report from Mr. Grayson on, and in terms of moving forward in this particular area, I'm putting you on the spot just a little bit. What do we really need to look at in conjunction with that EMS study, and what we know we need to staff up on in terms of our EMS paramedic staff, as well as our fleet? But what also needs to go along with that, probably a little separately, as we think about our opioid response? But then, how do we look at that to tie it all together? As you just said, sort of that interdepartmental, inter-agency collaboration as well? So what are, what are we really looking at? If we take that study and then layer this into that as well? I'm assuming we're looking at above and beyond what was in the study.
I think the initial response to answering this question is, we've got to follow the advice of the study. You know, we got to add more trucks, we've got to add more community paramedics to meet this need, you know, and we got to have a joint strategy on that. You know, right now, when we're in supply chain shortage, we can't just call up and order a truck. If I put an order in for an ambulance today, I'm looking at over a year on delivery date for that ambulance, you know? And it's things like that to where we need to follow the recommendations of the EMS study as we move forward. We need to drill down on this opioid epidemic, because it's going to get worse. You know, when I look at our responses and what we've done, you know, our numbers are high in North Carolina, but they'd be a lot higher if they wasn't for those 541 resuscitations, you know, in the field. I mean, so this problem, you know, when we look at that death data, we're looking at part of it. It's also, we got to look at the resuscitations and what we're doing is working right now. But we can't slide back on that, is what I'm saying. So we got to elevate this in a unified effort, move together with increased EMS personnel, not, and what's really important is, just realize, as high as this opioid crisis is increasing, so is our cardiac emergencies, so is our traumas. You know, the, our call volume has increased in the last two years by almost 50%. You know, so when we look at that, that's what the strategy, I want to look at the whole community, and taking those steps in the study to move forward, but also simultaneously looking at these things. Because here's the thing, more paramedics on the street means quicker response times. Where they call community paramedics, because in our system, they respond to those high-priority calls and overdose calls. You know, when I look at overdose calls responded to and dealt with last year, nine, around 983, I think? But when I look at total calls, looking at 4,000 calls. So they're doing a lot of outreach and support of the community, you know, and doing things like just keeping people in homeless camps informed that it's called Code Purple Night, and then connecting them with the service. You know, when we had the Arctic Front coming in, it's getting out and getting people to connect, so they didn't freeze to death. You know, it's getting blankets and tents and giving people rides to alternate care facilities. You know, so that study is really important. The other thing I'm going to think about is this. If we're united in these efforts, and we keep doing everything like we did during COVID, this one Buncombe, we're going to make a huge impact on this. And I think the strategy that the commissioners have come up here is a good strategy, and it's sound, but I just would be remiss if I didn't, I want to keep everybody on the same ship, that we got to rise this tide together, okay?
So appreciate you saying that and couldn't agree more. And I think part of, well, part of the intent in today's conversation is making sure we do that, honestly. The recommendations that just came forward regarding land acquisition, building of new facilities, expanding the fleet, working conditions, are so critical to how we expand and modernize the totality of EMS services. And simultaneous to that, we have dedicated funding coming through one settlement, and likely a second, that we can deploy, and we need to deploy as strategically as possible to respond to the opiate crisis. So I think one thing we need to make sure we're doing is not positioning these as competing interests in any way. The conversation today is, again, this laser-focused conversation around how we most effectively deploy opiate settlement funding to prevent overdose deaths, which is absolutely related to how we expand the overall capacity of EMS to respond to calls, and also a really distinct question from a programmatic perspective, from a services perspective, and from a funding perspective in that sense. And making sure that we also, at the commission level, are sort of fully tracking the totality of work that's happening around overdose and addiction response, and really making sure we're having those conversations about settlement funding, grant funding, philanthropic state, federal grant funding, and how that all intersects with general fund allocations, and how that all intersects with our number-one budget priority this year around public safety. So I see these as conversations that absolutely inform each other, that strengthen each other, frankly, and that make sure that we are putting particularly their settlement dollars to highest, best use in responding to, you know, responding to what's happening in real time in our community right now. So, so appreciate you raising all of that at once, and think it's, it's really our incumbent upon us to make sure we're always having that bigger-picture conversation and situating a focused conversation like this in that, in that broader context.
You know, Jasmine, as, as we discussed this, you know, first, I want to thank our staff, because if, if we didn't, if we weren't doing what we're doing, it would be even worse than what it is. But as we sit here and I listen, the question I have is, as we save these lives, as we put the Narcan out there, as we put more trucks out there, but isn't that also going to cause us, we have to balance that with keeping the people who we save, we're going to have to put them in some type of rehab? So that's going to be, you know, I think we can't lose track of that, because that's a big part of saving lives. You know, we've got to make sure they don't go bad. And it's, yeah, I mean, we've got a collision there that we're going to have, and we got to deal with it. We don't have any choice.
And to answer-
To save the lives.
To answer part of that, I think that's exactly right. I think that we've talked before about the path to recovery being a long one for a lot of these folks. Jumping on that means following up, right? Once we save these lives, which is our first key step, right? It's kind of a non-starter if you don't make it past the save the lives part. Once we get to the point that we're saving people's lives, I do want to praise our staff, ranging from EMS and our community paramedics who-
All of them, yeah.
-we got to get out there and see firsthand that they are continuing that work. That is an ongoing process for them, and Justice Services Department doing some tremendous follow-up and making sure that these people are navigating their sobriety, navigating the court system, putting themselves back in a position where they can thrive. I think the missing piece, or the underserved piece for a long time, has been getting them to a point that we're even keeping these people alive. We have a lot of resources, we have a lot of people in our community who care, and I think that those resources are available, but the polysubstance use has thrown us for a loop, and we have some urgent action that we need to take.
I have a question, just trying to kind of figure this all out. So from what I'm hearing, the, with some of the overdose, the prescription overdose related to that, you're saying that we're seeing that trend down, and then other overdoses are trending up. And so what I'm trying to understand here with, with what we have in place, what we're currently doing, so you're seeing all that as positive, okay? But, so are you proposing that, I'm trying to understand, why is that not helping with the other overdose issues? Because part of what I was hearing Taylor say is that we are addressing overdose issues even outside the community paramedic. So just help me understand more of where that direct concern is coming from.
Well, I think really, the data answers that question, is we're seeing record numbers of deaths. So what is, what we're doing is, if these programs didn't exist, even more people would be dying, right? These programs are not yet reaching some of the people who are at highest risk of dying. And so I think that's the simplest way I would, if I'm understanding your question, how I'd answer it, is that, similar to, for instance, in COVID, during the pandemic, we were at a certain point able to dial in data to a certain extent to see, okay, this, what we're seeing is efforts to get the vaccination to, this population is working, but we're seeing lower numbers than we'd expect over here. So we need to kind of double down on efforts to make sure that this community has access to this. And this I see as sort of a parallel moment in if, in that these strategies are working quite well and have worked to, among other things, reduce deaths from prescription drugs. But there's a whole new group of people in our community at very high risk of, who are dying, not just at risk of dying, who aren't accessing these services.
And you think that's just because there's a lack of awareness, our outreach? You're thinking that, what are you thinking can change that?
Yeah, I think, I'll speak to it, and then it sounds maybe Sarah does. I think a range of things. One, the capacity of these programs. Two, they were designed to respond to opiate use disorder, not to reach people with polysubstance, people who are polysubstance users. They were, and figuring out how these services can be made accessible to people who are polysubstance users can be made accessible within particularly the Black, Indigenous, and Latino communities, where we're seeing rising numbers of overdose deaths, is the work that is in front of us as a community. And that's sort of the data is very clearly pointing towards.
And Terry, I think, just an additional answer to that question, is that we have this successful MAT program in the jail, but as Jasmine's alluding to, there's other populations who aren't interacting with either the jail or that program within it. And so thinking of ways and leveraging these funds to implement strategies to engage with other populations, that's, that's a lot harder to do, but that's what we need to do to get these numbers down as well.
Okay. Thank you both. That's, that's helping. And, and just so I understand this too, like, because you're speaking about the opioid funding, and I know last year when we went through this process, it was emphasized multiple times that there was this process we were going through, and we were following that. And so I want to understand better, because I think what I'm hearing is a suggestion to deviate from that process or not. So I just want to understand what-
Yeah, no, I think that's a great flag. I don't see this as deviating from that process, I see this as recognizing what's happening around us. And, you know, an incredible steering committee of community members has worked very diligently to develop recommendations around how some of that settlement funding get used. I don't think there was ever a decision point, the totality of that settlement funding, either in year one or any of the 16 years, or in wave-two settlement funding over 13 years, we have never, as a body, voted on how to use that money. And I think what I always understood the process to be, is that we initially allocated about $500,000 in this year's budget, which we then voted in September on specific strategies for. We would get ideas and recommendations from a group of community members, and then it would come back to us. And in some ways, what we are doing is accelerating a piece of the timeline to say, hey, if we could wait a few more months, sure. But actually, the data that we're seeing, the highest number of overdose deaths we've ever seen in Buncombe County, is ringing enough of an alarm bell that we want to accelerate the timeline on that commission-level discussion around, how do we actually deploy the totality of these funds? And how do we think about developing the right systems so that we can be as adaptive as possible? So for instance, in our community, we're investing in incredible programs, like the START program, which DSS presented a few weeks ago. That's an amazing program, or the, any number of different programs. And what we're not investing, or what we are trying to elevate is a need that is becoming increasingly urgent to have dedicated strategies around overdose death prevention, which is about saving someone's life today, and increasing access to the strategies that can actually save someone's life. So affordable, or access to housing is critically important for someone on their path to recovery, but access to housing isn't going to save someone's life today. And what we're trying to do is ask staff to come back with the sort of best ideas from across multiple departments and agencies on how, based on everything we know right now, and the level of acuity we're seeing around this, we can make sure that services that can save someone's life tonight or tomorrow can reach those people most at risk. So this is, you know, we never did the sort of- So this is, you know, we we never did the sort of deep dive work at the commission level to fully articulate and develop a multi-year strategy on the settlement. What we embarked upon was a plan for year one that would inform future years. And what we're saying right now is, hey, we need to stop for a second and look at what's happening in real time and make sure we're being fully responsive to that.
Thank you for the clarification.
And I will, the final piece I'll say is sort of in the in the more granular level is a sort of both and, which is we've allocated 458,500 dollars from year one. There is 1.6 million in year one funding. We have really important discussions to have about what gets rolled into supporting ongoing work, how programs that are currently on the cliff of grant funding have sustained funding. And also, I think the perspective that we're bringing to the table is how we have very precise targeted strategies around reducing deaths in real time.
Did you have an additional info to share as well?
Yeah, if I could, Commissioner Rose, your question was great. If I heard you correctly, it was if what we're doing is working, why is it getting worse? Is that what I heard you ask? It's a great question. In simple numbers, in 2015, 64% of our deaths were just opioid involved. So opioid use disorder is effectively treated with medication assisted treatment, MAT. In 2021, 29% of our deaths were only opioid involved. So we've cut that in half, much like we did the prescription drugs, right? We've gone down 50% in those deaths. So solo opioid use disorder has been reduced by 50% in our overall deaths. So that's a great example of what we're doing is working and on the converse, the strategies we're we're utilizing broadly are not impacting those who are most now impacted, the stimulant users and those who are BIPOC of the BIPOC community. Their deaths have gone up considerably from 13% up to 50% of of that population. And I've got some good news in all of this. The jail deaths, correlated jail deaths within a five year span have gone down 22%. And I've been able to crunch the 2022 numbers as well and they're consistent. So for the past three years, the work that we're doing in the jail is effective. And even more surprisingly, it was surprising to me to see the difference of the individuals who are stimulant users within the jail population. In 2019, it was at 74%, but three years later, it's down, it's been reduced 26%. So the strategies we're employing in the jails, specific to this problem of polysubstance use is effective. And so I I think that's really important to report that there are things that we can do and part of that has been broadening the scope of who we're serving, right? If somebody's a stimulant user, we're not simply saying you don't, you're not eligible, right? Because we know that fentanyl has infiltrated that population.
When you say jail deaths, just to clarify, that means for someone who spent time in the detention facility, the the likelihood that they would have suffer a fatal overdose has declined by 22% after they after they depart the detention center.
Sort of. What we've done is I've put a five year governor on the the jail population post release. And so individuals who have been released from our facility over the past five years, that percentile of folks has been reduced down 22% since we started MAT programming. So if we're looking at overall Bunkham County deaths, over 50% of the deaths in Bunkham County had moved through our building at one point.
Say that one more time.
Of everybody in Bunkham County reflected in these deaths, over 50% of those individuals had been in detention. I think the specific number was 57% within a five year period of their death. So if they died here five years back within that window, they'd been in our building. So we we keep moving that governor forward to see how effective our program is. And what we're seeing is a 22% reduction of that population deaths since we started our programming.
Thank you. I think that's that's a really powerful thing to hear to hear that we have a very specific, albeit unfortunate in some ways, but very specific point of intervention in these folks' lives. This is not some abstract version of our community that we're reaching out to. These are people who we can track back to a specific point that are likely to appear again and we're intervening at a point where we are saving lives. So I I do want to at least thank you for you and Claire both for your innovation and your hard work and in doing a lot of this. This is really important that you're saving lives through this.
Sure. Thank you. And the jail really is a crossroads. I know I say this a lot and I get harassed a little bit for my data, but I will say 46% of our jail population in a three month period reported an occurrence of an overdose. Now, this was a non fatal overdose, right? So this, these are the overdoses that Taylor's teams are responding to, that our health department reversal kits are impacting, folks moving through that are not dying, but they're also at higher risk, higher risk for overdosing again, right? So that's where our programming comes in and links them to treatment and provides that supportive housing. As you mentioned, Commissioner Whiteside, what are we doing after that event to maintain their health and wellness?
I just want to also make sure I heard you correctly again, just because this, you know, this this data is really powerful. 46% of the folks who have spent time in the detention facility self-reported that they had experienced an overdose in the not too distant past.
Correct. This was three months worth of data and it was over 1,300 interviews. It reduces down to about 200 people a month. And those are the individuals who make it through the medical intake point so that they're not just booking and releasing. A large majority of our population walks straight through the building without spending any extensive amount of time there. So these are individuals who have been there from four hours to 24 hours, making it through that first medical intervention.
Other Tiffany or Taylor, do you have additional things you'd like to share with us too?
I think there was a question about like equity in our programs and I can speak from what I'm seeing in terms of like justice services and working with Health and Human Service. We know from years of study that people, regardless of race, use substances at the same amount or same level. But what we do see is like trends and where substance is coming from and how they get into communities. COVID is the perfect example of what communities it target first. And then we saw the disparities coming into African American communities a few months out. But what we do see and what we're experiencing is a lack of diversity in our programming. And so and then there's also a mistrust of systems and government, right? So how do we encourage people to, especially those who have been marginalized or have been overpoliced or have fear of DSS getting called and all these barriers adequately want to enroll in services and want to participate? Even in our two programs that are centered around substance use, the felony drug diversion program and the treatment courts, we see that black people are more likely to qualify or have eligible charges, but they're not necessarily enrolling in the program. And if they are enrolling in the program, their completion rates look a little bit different. Are they completing? And what we found is wanting to ensure that we have trust, we build in culturally competent material and that we are partnering with black led organizations to help support us in doing the work and providing education and awareness. HHS is doing similar work around going into marginalized communities, creating outreach, partnering with the community engagement markets and being intentional about how we do our programming and how we do our efforts in in outreach in these communities. But it is a it is a partnership in building trust.
Tiffany, thank you so much for elevating what you just said. We talk a lot here about equity and looking at things through a lens of equity. And I think this is one particular area we have not really laser focused and really put our money where our mouth is on that. And what I hear you say echoes so much of what we hear when we do talk about meeting the needs of our racially diverse community. So thank you for what you just said and I hope that we'll all commit to making sure that we're looking at this again through that lens of racial equity as we're addressing this particular issue. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Taylor?
So I just recently did a presentation with the state medical director. We presented numbers and so this is a snapshot, but it's recent numbers that looks at our MAT program for the year, which goes right in line with what Sarah just said, kind of answers the question that Commissioner Whiteside and Mr. Wells were saying, are we efficient in what we're doing? Is it working? So just when I look at the snapshot of the bridge to care with MAHAC, 63% of the patients that we were connecting to services in the post overdose response in the initial pilot study was kind of sticking with the program. Okay, but we didn't have MAT then. So what, the patients we were losing were the patients we could not connect with a service. So let me tell you where we at today. 93% of the patients referred to MAHAC, 92% of those 93, which means we're only losing 1%, are connecting with that primary care physician to do follow through to stay on the MAT. And so Commissioner, to your point about rehab, three to six months later, 67% are staying in the program versus only 63 joining the program before. So what that shows me, and this is just a snapshot, that what we're doing is making a huge impact. Because when you look at national trends, they're somewhere between the teens and the and the like low twenties for success rate where people staying in a program for rehab. So like what we're doing, without a doubt, is some of the best work in the nation and in the state. I mean, the state medical director just told us, he said, I need to see more of your data. And that's one of the things we come back and having this conversation about EOC and kind of getting an ICS structure, so we can provide that data more and be more transparent with it. Because right now, I know that because that's MAHAC's data, it's not our data, it's what we've been collaborating with them. And I know it's a snapshot because I just did the presentation on that. You know, three months from now, my gut feeling is this program will look a lot better because we're refining the program and getting a lot more deliberate with trust in the community. And we also got new programs coming on like the community healthcare workers that's going to be in the housing authority to help connect people. That's another way we're building equity and trust in the community through relationships. And a lot of this life saving technology that we're we're doing is not so much technology as it's just good old fashioned relationships, getting to know people and building trust with people. And our community paramedics are so passionate, I can't say enough. This ain't Taylor's work, Claire's work, I mean, even though Claire's doing some grassroots stuff like I've never seen before, this is like their passion. They're out there putting that extra effort into it every day and it's truly making a difference. And I can show you all that. Thank you all.
All right, Commissioners, any other questions or comments on this topic at this time?
I just want to express appreciation to staff who joined the conversation and shared your expertise and to fantastic questions. I think just to reiterate again, if there was a simple formula to follow, we'd be doing that. And what we are trying to do today is bring this onto a platform where the many programs and agencies and departments working on this can bring forth their best ideas informed by equity, informed by data about how we respond to the crisis in front of us and how that is situated within our broader work and broader commitments around responding to the opiate crisis in our community. So just really appreciate the deep dive. And I think just in terms of making sure we're synced up on next steps, County Manager, if it works for you, Parker Martin and I and anyone else who would like to join the conversation, we'll stay connected with you all about sort of when different departments are ready to come back and sort of bring forth ideas. And then the best ways that we can marry this conversation to the to the work we'll do in this budget cycle, but also to have that multi-year, to develop that multi-year strategy around how we deploy the settlement funding and how we support the totality of this work as we move forward.
The last question I want to just ask and if and if there's someone here who would like to comment on it briefly, we do need to adjourn and, you know, it's been a great conversation. The one other question I'm still interested in learning more about, I mean, the conversation today is has been very focused on how do we help people avoid a lethal overdose, right? And so that's obviously super important. I would like to get an update and maybe maybe I'll just ask staff to maybe share some information with Commission so so not try to answer it right now, but around the dynamics of the question I asked earlier around when we look at all of the folks in our community who end up experiencing an overdose, maybe they get help and it's not lethal or for those who it is lethal. You know, again, when we kind of, when the Commission started looking at the opioid epidemic five or six years ago and putting more attention on it, you know, that's really where when we look at these data, you know, back in 2015, 2016, things really exploded and they've only gotten worse, but there was, you know, there was a gigantic increase in overdoses and and deaths starting around that time. And and again, we were hearing from, as we were sort of looking at this, looking at this national crisis, that, you know, it was such a high percentage of people who were wrestling with addiction where it started because they were prescribed medications by a doctor and they developed an addiction. So they were they were injured, they'd had surgery, but it didn't, it didn't, you know, sort of went against this perhaps common assumption many of us held that, at least at that time, the most common source of the origin of the addiction challenge was recreational drug use, right? It was actually a medical prescription was the origin of what led to people developing the addiction. So I would love to hear some updates from the folks who who are tracking all this around what role that origin plays in terms of medically prescribed drugs that compared to other other ways that these stories start. So I think I'd just like to kind of kick, put that out there for something that maybe if it could be emailed or we can talk more about it when we have further discussions. So, all right, hey, thanks everyone. Great, great discussion about, obviously a really important topic. So appreciate all of you. All right, Commissioners, that's everything on the agenda for this meeting. So we're adjourned and we'll start the regular meeting at five o'clock.